Good evening, I'm calling to order the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, July 15th, 2025, meeting to order. Asking Commissioner Malir to open us with the invocation, please.
Thank you, please, please bow your head. Lord, thank you for this day, thank you for the freedom to assemble and govern ourselves. Please be with us as we discuss county business tonight and make, make decisions. Many of these decisions are difficult, but please help us to make these decisions in wisdom and in truth. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The flag of the United States of America. Through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Records show we have a full quorum of commissioners. Mister, do you have the minutes from July 1st, meeting in your packet? You had a chance for them to review them, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting as presented.
Second.
Questions? Can I raise your right hand? Carrying. Presentation of the agenda, let's see, we have F1, so we moved to H, H3E to debate, which has to do with environmental services.
I1C1.
That's correct. Also, there was another agenda item on the software.
Item I1A2?
I'm gonna back the committee.
Okay.
Do I need, do we make that motion when we get to it?
I don't know.
But now?
Um, I don't think we need to make a motion and have it reviewed by committee, so it...
No, you don't.
Yeah, we're, yeah, I think we would just, it would just be a matter of process that we would just bring it back at a later date. But if the chair's asking it to be reviewed by committee, we'll, we'll do that.
Some ones need to run some examples without comparison.
Got it.
Nothing under special recognition, we have the consent agenda, commissioners, items on this, then through the necessary committee, and receive the necessary, necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda, so if they still meet with you, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all of these consent agenda items as presented, except for the changes we previously discussed.
Second.
Questions? On favor, raise your right hand. Going to Commissioner Malir, I believe you have the first item.
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve Resolution 25-19 as presented and authorize the chairman to sign all these required forms and documents. Second.
So, as you know, we are in, in tax season, the bills have gone out, we are establishing the millage rate, this is the rollback, I'm sorry?
The bills, you mean the values.
The values have gone out, that's correct, not the bills, I'm sorry, yeah, the assessments have gone out, but we are establishing the millage rate, typically, this would be the time of the year that we would have millage rate hearings, although we're not required to have millage rate hearings if we roll the rate all the way to the rollback rate. So, it was the intent of the board when we did our budget this year to go to the rollback rate, so you have stayed true to that promise to the taxpayers, that we're bringing to you a millage rate of the, of the rollback rate tonight. The actual M&amp;O rollback rate is 4.360, so that will be the new M&amp;O millage rate, and the total millage rate for the county side is 4.814 mils, that includes fire and also the debt service, which, debt service has also rolled back a bit. We are also, have been advised by the school board that they have taken action and rolled their millage rate back to the rollback rate of 16.234. So, this is consistent to what you've done the last many years, many, many of those, we've gone all the way to the rollback rate, and that's where we are this year, so our taxpayers should see a break as a result of that. Answer any questions you may have.
Could you just provide a brief definition of the rollback rate for folks?
Say that again?
Provide a brief definition of what the rollback rate means.
Yeah, the rollback rate, basically what happens is when you have the increase in the digest, we have to compute a rate that would essentially negate the increase in the digest. So, as property values rise, millage rate is here, so if we lower that millage rate down, it should bring those property values back down to make it almost even as to what you would pay. Now, some people's values went up more than that, I looked at mine, my, my personal values were actually more, but there are some people that it should make them break even, and if you actually had less value this year for some reason, then you'll get a significant tax break.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Alan. Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2505, amending chapter 78, taxes, Article 5, occupational tax and licenses, section 149, when tax due and payable.
Second.
The change to our code that requires that an application for an occupational tax be paid at the time of application, current code gives them 30 days, so staff will actually issue an occupation tax form and then spend the next 45 days or so chasing down the payment for it. So, this will actually make them pay for their occupational tax form when they apply for it.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand.
I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2506, amending chapter 34, environment, Article 1, grading, section 34, 1, major site grading.
Second.
Recently, commission has voted to amend our chapter 90 of our code, which covers zoning and street trees and grading and buffers. Chapter 34 is a, is an environmental section of our code that has some of the same aspects in it, so we wanted to clarify chapter 34 as well. Big things I'll point out here is the, the 50-foot buffer for mass grading is being reduced to 25 to coincide with the reduction in chapter 90 down to 25 feet for buffers. However, we did put a caveat that that buffer must now be fully contained in the development's common area, so it is protected from individuals going in and reducing the buffer. We also included the term planted berm. Remember, we do allow for a, a buffer to be removed to install a large berm to then replant, so you create a more visual screen from the development, so that is updated here as well. Chapter 34 also included street tree requirements, we have updated that in chapter 90, so we're removing the street tree requirements in 34, it'll be covered completely in chapter 90 that y'all have already approved. And then we've modified our slope requirements. Anything steeper than a six to one slope was required to stay on one parcel, we did not allow those slopes to cross, across, not allow those slopes to compete across property lines, if you would. That created some challenges for designers, so we worked on a way to allow them to have those slopes cross property lines. It does require them to put in a subsurface storm system, the requirements are based on how far the storm system, or how far the water runs across the property lines. For instance, they were doing a 250 linear feet section of water, it, it gives you the, the details of how you design that subsurface system, it's broken down to 200 feet, 150 feet, great design criteria there for that. Also requires that there's HOA requirements, that the HOA is going to maintain any of these slopes that cross property lines, so we want to make sure it's very clear that one body is responsible for any kind of repairs to a slope that could impact multiple property owners. The old code was designed to protect individual property owners, this gives more leeway to allow the, the slopes to cross property lines, but then gives firm ways of guaranteeing they're repaired by the HOA versus individual property owners. And then it just, it also talks about how tall the slope can be without having to have benches in it, so you have to have a 10-foot bench for every 10-foot in height the slope goes. I believe that's all, that's a lot to give you, again, most of this y'all have already voted on, but I wanted to update chapter 34 to match chapter 90.
Only five pages, but there's a lot of it.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand.
I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of resolution 2521, adopting the fee schedule for alcoholic beverage licenses.
Second.
This deals with our, our license fees for alcoholic beverages. The first one is we are going to clarify that a retail consumption dealer eating establishment with less than 1,600 square feet is calculated based on the actual footprint of the, of the business. Some people would come in and say, my dining area is only 1,000 square feet, therefore I don't meet the requirements, however, the whole footprint of the building would be 2,000 square feet, so just making it very clear that the footprint includes everything contained in the business. We're changing the temporary alcohol beverage permit administrative fee to $25, it's 20 now, so it's a $5 increase to cover all the staff time. We're also removing the other jurisdiction catering permit, so people that are licensed in, say, Richmond County that want to come here, we were charging them a fee that was double what the folks here were paying, so we're actually going to eliminate that other jurisdiction and just do a temporary alcohol beverage permit, so everybody pays the same fee, so that's going to be a reduction in cost for those folks. Also reduce the administrative fee for people that provide us with their criminal history directly from the sheriff's office, so they don't have to pay us, they can go get it themselves and apply it to us. Have to answer any questions you might have about this.
Questions, comments? Motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand.
Lastly, sir, I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of resolution 2522, planning services fee schedule revision.
Second.
This is increase of our encroachment agreement fee from $55 to $80. This $25 fee increase is due to a change in state law that does not allow an individual to file a plat in the courthouse, they have to be verified through an e-file system and then recorded through that. Not an easy process, not a difficult process, but it's, it just doesn't make sense for an individual to go get verified to file one document, so for them having to do that, we are verified, we can file those documents, so they'll just pay us the $25 filing fee, we just turn around and hand it straight to the court system and file it on their behalf, so it's a straight pass, pass-through fee.
Questions, comments? Motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand.
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve amendment number four to the contract with Series Environmental Services, Inc., for emergency watershed protection programs. Sir, this is...
Second.
This is the amendment four to our series contract to clean waterways in the county that were approved by the NRCS. When I brought this to committee, there was a fee for $128 a linear foot for removal of debris from waterways. That line item was when they can put a piece of equipment actually in the creek and work from the creek, work both sides of the bank from inside the creek. However, we did ask them to provide us with a cost of working from outside of the creek. There's, there's going to be situations where they cannot put equipment in the creek, so they're going to have to work one side, then go work the other side, so they provided that cost to us as well. It'll be $164 a linear foot when they're working from land, $128 per linear foot when they're working from water. Again, we'll bill this on unit costs, so as they're doing the work, we will keep track of it, paid entirely from the NRCS grant, $34 million grant, our estimates are about $10 million, so we do have plenty of money to cover this work.
Questions? Good, I'm glad we're getting started on the waterways. Motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried. Or people who request... Second decision, second session items first, then we'll have the folks speak. One, Commissioner Couch.
Yes, sir, I make a motion to approve $26,700 to David and Dolores Anderson, parcel 060061, $43,800 to John Carter II, parcel 060054A, $24,500 to William Jr. and Bonnie O'Leary, parcel 067101, $8,000 to Charles Durand, parcel 072249, and $11,900 to Gilliam and Kathy McKinnon, parcels 072163 and 072164, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Second.
They're all standard negotiations, we are now at 80% complete, 56 to go.
Any questions? Motion second on the floor, on favor, raise your right hand. Ashley Keller. State your name. Five minutes.
Ashley Keller, Grove Town. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. I first want to say, there's been a lot of public response to the county library issues lately. I'm glad to see so many individuals so passionate about our library services. Anytime the library controversy of guidelines is brought up in a social media post, it gains literally hundreds of comments. Most of the comments on the post regarding the library understand what I see this to be about, control and censorship. Columbia County leadership would like to continue to meddle in the library and not have to answer to anyone. As you have seen, it is not a popular decision to mess with the library. What I would really like to address tonight is the misinformation and lack of transparency that is being given to the public. This board and the county seem to be making a lot of decisions about the library in the dark. The guidelines were passed without any input from librarians or citizens, the discussion to remove us from PINE system altogether was only uncovered because of an open record request that, which if not done by a citizen, we would have likely been removed from the state system altogether, as that is clearly what was being planned before public outcry. In this chamber, a book was held up by a commissioner and stated it previously was in the children's section, but now it is in the adult section due to the guidelines. This same information was shared by several other commissioners at a town hall meeting in a propaganda pamphlet. This book was never in the teen section or the children's section, it was an adult section graphic novels. This same book is used time and time again by people who trust you as the reason that they want guidelines. I would never expect my commissioners to know where certain books are placed in the library, that is the job of professional librarians. What I would expect is that my commissioners not meddle in the library with policy and leave that up to the professionals, and certainly not spread misinformation to the public as a way to rile up support for your ideas. Second, it was also stated in this chamber by a commissioner that the library advisory board is, quote, "just advisory in nature." I was delighted to hear that statement, because I too believe that they should just be advisory, but that is not the reality of what is happening. The board is who voted for the guidelines, they are the ones that were reviewing reconsiderations when there was meetings, and as of last year, they removed, the board removed any reference to partnering with librarians in their bylaws, and instead gave themselves full power to implement policies. Again, maybe the commissioner who said that they were just advisory was misinformed, but that is quite concerning to me then. How do you not know that is happening? And if you do know this is happening, why are you appointing only politically aligned members to the board? Should the board not be filled with librarian staff, educators, people who are advocates for the library, not individuals who are lobbying the state government to have librarians jailed? Can you imagine the position that you have put the librarians in our county in? The people who is supposed to advocate for them, for what they do and help them, is instead spending their time lobbying to jail for bills that would jail librarians? Talk about a morale killer, no wonder they are all quitting. As a community, we have seen significant growth over the last 10 to 15 years. We are welcoming new community members with the promise of good resources and good schools. By inviting new community members, we are building a more diverse community, which I think is great. The new proposed data center will bring in hundreds of jobs in the tech industry. You cannot try to attract a talented workforce and still live in the 1960s. If you want to modernize and bring progress to our community, that means in all ways, not just real estate deals. People want to live in a community where we accept people as they are despite their differences, and certainly don't want to live in a community where we are targeting LGBTQ plus books in our public library. Finally, I leave you with this. I am a product manager by trade, said simply, identify and solve problems by building technology solutions for Fortune 10 companies. There is one statement from my pragmatic training that I have kept very close to my heart, my opinions, while valid, are irrelevant. See, I can have what I think are the coolest ideas, build the coolest technology solutions, but if it doesn't actually solve a problem for the end user, what is the point? The same applies here, you're spending a lot of time and resources trying to solve a problem that simply does not exist. Your opinions, while valid to you, are irrelevant. Individuals have the right and should have the right to freely accept materials. I respectfully ask that politicians stay out of the library and allow that to be run by professionals. It's okay to make mistakes and own up to them. It's actually one of the best characteristics of leadership is to be humble and admit when you are wrong. We currently have books written for three-year-olds in the adult section of our library, that is insane. Rescind the guidelines and let us all move past this. Our citizens want and deserve better. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Karen Parham, my address is 3421 Hilltop Trail, thank you for the opportunity to speak. When I first started reaching out to you last September after the passage of the library guidelines, I thought you were just acquiescing to political pressure. I couldn't believe that my own local commissioners would become so entangled in culture war issues that you'd abandoned good governance. I now realize that I was naive. I did get one response back after my first email, not from my own commissioner, with my last name misspelled and simply telling me that I was wrong. Despite that, I continued to email and engage. I truly believe that my suggestion to give each city and the school board a seat on the library board would help you politically with the more extreme voices in your party, but giving up power wasn't an option, right? Instead, every recommendation I made in good faith was ignored. I suppose I should be grateful that you're no longer rolling your eyes when I speak. What I find most astonishing, though, is the lack of integrity. I tried to give grace, thinking maybe you were just misinformed about gender queer, but at this point, you're openly lying to constituents and the media about that book to cover for yourselves. And if you're willing to lie about a book, what else are you willing to lie about? You could have simply said, we made a mistake, but instead you double down and make it worse. It's truly astonishing, I expect this kind of behavior from DC politicians, not from people who have to see their constituents every week. And now we're seeing the impact of these guidelines with the staff shortages at the library. The county currently has six positions open at Evans and two at Harlem. And what do you expect? Once again, just because you found one librarian willing to do your bidding doesn't make it right. Meanwhile, the person who files over 60% of the book challenges seems to get, to go there only to bully staff. She walks around now telling employees who gets to keep their jobs. That's the behavior you've empowered. When staff went to HR about toxic, the toxic environment created by board members you appointed, they were told HR couldn't do anything because your appointees don't technically work for the county, but you own it. Their actions are a direct reflection of your leadership, or lack thereof, because this isn't leadership, it's chaos. Even these board appointments, the only qualification one board member seems to have is that she and her husband each gave $2,500 to Commissioner Couch's campaign. Honestly, it seems cheap, I mean, why not charge the full $3,300 each? Dr. Caraway, Commissioner Caraway's wife, has education experience, but she also came under fire in 2019 for banning books as superintendent. You all knew her record when she was appointed, and I think it's important to note that Commissioner Caraway filed his declaration of intent and had already started fundraising before her appointment. Considering one of his employees was already on the board, did it not cross your mind that maybe this wasn't a great idea? I mean, I'm left wondering why the Caraway house feels entitled to dictate what every family in Columbia County reads. I have three teenagers, maybe I should send the Caraways my food bills since they apparently want to raise my kids. You've also have Mr. Johnson telling people the county pulled out of the region because other counties might change the guidelines, but Columbia County holds five of the nine votes, and you even dissolved the county library board, which violates the Greater Clark Hills Regional Library Constitution, because according to that constitution, your representatives aren't eligible to serve if they aren't also serving on a county board. But you control five out of nine votes anyway, so no one can enforce it. You bully the other counties while pretending to be the victim, it's ridiculous. I've also seen commissioners trying to appear moderate now, while they themselves filed a reconsideration form a couple of years ago. One of the arguments in that book challenge was that male nipples were offensive in a Pride Parade book. Seriously? Male nipples? I mean, I see men mowing lawns shirtless all the time and no one blinks an eye, but male nipples are offensive, I guess, if they appear in a Pride Parade. Your bias is showing. This county has shown bias before, many remember when a prior commission revoked a business liquor's license over the 50/50 rule. Yet, nobody can remember any business before or after that that has been audited or scrutinized to that extent. We all know that business was targeted because they hosted a drag show. Meanwhile, the county manager's wife owns a private club down the street exempt from the same rules. Now, the rumors about what happens there at that club aren't my business, consenting adults can do what they want, but destroying the widow's livelihood over a drag show while exempting your friends is the very definition of hypocrisy. We're not stupid, we see exactly what you're doing. And I stand here tonight because I still believe that public libraries are a pillar of a free society, and that telling the truth matters, even if you don't think it does. Thank you.
Marlena.
Marlena Bergeron, 2545 Willow Creek Court. My son is playing frisbee golf tonight, and I frankly would rather be with him, but when you're wrestling a bear, you don't... Frisbee golf at Patriots Park, it's fun, you should try it. You quit, not when you're tired, but when the bear withdraws its unconstitutional guidelines from the library. Thank you for that prayer, Commissioner Malar. I want to reiterate thanks for our freedoms, for those who fought for them, I want to pray for our librarians, and also pray for our immigrants, those who work all day in all weather and late lay with anxiety for less pay. Lord, please guide our leaders and deputies to treat all people with dignity and due process, just as you tell us in scripture, you were once aliens in Egypt too, in other 21 verses, to encourage compassion. We pray for our, our community, and we are so thankful for all these blessings. One of my favorite Disney princesses is Belle, not just because she reads, but because she seeks truth. Gaston, a selfish jerk with a bruised ego, beats the town into thinking the beast is a threat to their children, but we know the beast is kind, and Gaston is the real monster. The same fear-driven mob mentality shows up in Mary Shelley's Frankenstein, Stephen King's The Mist, and even in the New Testament, when the crowd chooses Barabbas over Jesus. Archibald MacLeish, a 20th century poet and librarian, said, "A nation that permits a minority to live in fear of persecution is a nation which invites disaster." That's what I see happening with your policies. Jesus didn't say, "Love your neighbor as long as they're Baptist, play ball with your kid, or blame her." I have some book trivia for you. Commissioner Allen, you might know this one. What is the most banned book in all time? George Orwell's 1984, "Where ignorance is strength, two plus two equals five if the party says it is. They want to abolish the orgasm, there is no love, no loyalty, except to Big Brother, no art, no literature, no science. When we are omnipotent, we shall have no more need of science." That's scary stuff. And speaking of science, 100 years ago this month, the Scopes Trial started, after a science teacher was arrested for teaching evolution, a reminder that threats to intellectual freedom aren't new. In 2022, our library had a banned book display, common at all libraries and bookstores during Banned Book Week, a patron complained, missing the irony, and Mr. Johnson, instead of gently but firmly standing up for our freedom to read, you had it taken down. That was the end of the library's rotating displays and the beginning of censorship. Now, we've got secret guidelines, missing books, eight open staff positions, a new director, and our county has seceded from our region, all because of county policies. Sometimes I think it's not a big deal, I can still use Pines or go to another library, but no, my tax dollars matter just as much as those pushing censorship. We will not get used to this boiling pot of water. Stewardship at our public institutions means responsibility, civility, and respected freedoms, not unilateral control of content. If you're confident in all the changes you've made, put them on the ballot, let the people decide. I'm not convinced that the majority of residents want you moving or hiding books. And thank goodness we didn't leave Pines, or rather, thank goodness you were caught due to Ms. Parham's intrepid research. Sometimes I wonder if you're even listening to us. In April, I stood up here and said, I'm so grateful we're in Pines, because I could return my books in Athens where I left them and have them entered back in the system, but you still considered leaving. Evans Library can hold over 150,000 books, there's room for everyone, getting upset over a page in a book taken out of context is... but you still considered leaving. Evans Library can hold over 150,000 books. There's room for everyone. Getting upset over a page in a book taken out of context is like being offended by a fart in a hurricane. Meanwhile, our Reed Creek Boardwalk is still a mess. Bartram Trails and Lake Springs and Petersburg Campground, where my son and I have camped for six years in a row, are still closed. What can we do to expedite the restoration? They boost mental and physical health. My neighbors and I still have our internet cable lying across our road. We have intermittent service problems with every car that drives over it for the past nine months. Can you please help me get Xfinity to fix it and bury it before school starts or urgently before football season, because my husband is going to lose it? If you want to protect kids, pay for free swim clinics instead of lawyers. The number one cause of death to drowning is drowning for ages four and under. Or support a youth orchestra. Mr. Schlachter, to answer your question last time, I played the violin since fourth grade with a public school orchestra program. Our county has no such program. There was a room built for an orchestra at Lake Side High, but it's now a third band room, and you wanted to charge our volunteer Columbia County Orchestra $1,000 to give a free concert at the public library. We deserve great art, great stories, and great libraries, organized by subject and author, not politics. Things change. Remember, this whole board was hardcore Democrats 65 years ago. Think of the library.
Thank you. I've given you six minutes. Thank you.
Okay. This is my one policy recommendation. The library should be like Thanksgiving. You go, you take what you like, skip what you don't, and don't yuck on someone else's yum. Thank you so much.
Howard Johnson. Howard?
Good evening, Howard Johnson. My address is 252 Silver Maple Road. I'm here yet again to talk about the library. It's an organization, an institution that I am very passionate about. I visit the library at least once a week. I'm an avid attendee of the Sassy Stitchers Club.
What?
The Sassy Stitchers Club. I'll get there. It's a group that meets on Thursdays from 10 to noon to share crochet, knitting patterns, any sort of yarn crafts. As you can imagine, I'm a little bit of an outsider in such a group. Most of our group, most of our regular attendees are elder women in their 70s and 80s. I've been attending since February, and I'm the only man that's been there since I've been. Our group is very diverse. We have Christian members, we have Jewish members, we have Muslim members, we have atheist members, and I'm sure plenty of others. All of these women are able to give me perspective that I do not have, right? I have no idea what it was like to grow up as a black girl in Oklahoma in the 1950s. Now I have a little bit more perspective. I have no idea what it was like to grow up as a Jewish woman in New York, raised by immigrant parents who were fleeing the war. Now I have a little bit more perspective. These women also rely on my perspective, which is a little different. One woman was recently widowed, and when she had to take her car in because she ran over a nail, she came to ask me and said, "Howard, was this guy pulling my leg?" Right? These wheels only have 15,000 miles on them. One was shot. Like, he was telling me I really needed to get all four. I was like, "No, ma'am, no you don't." Right? He was just looking for an easy sale. He saw you as a mark, right? So our differences are able to make us stronger, right? This is something that this woman's husband had taken care of for their entire married life of 63 years, and she didn't have any experience herself, right? So when she was looking for someone who maybe knew a little bit more, and I'm by no means an expert on cars, but it is a little bit more expected for men to know a little bit, you know what I mean? So she took comfort in my reassurances that, no, you did the right thing. You didn't need to buy four new tires. You just needed to get the one, right? Our differences is what make us strong. Our members at the Sassy Stitchers, we have members who have trans family members and friends, we have members who have gay family members and friends, and the policies being implemented at the library are telling us that we are not welcome there, that the gay and trans community needs to be sectioned off from our county, that it's unacceptable to be seen. The policies this board has been implementing, again, tells us that we're not welcome at the library. So my call to action to the five of you is on Thursday morning at 10 o'clock, I would like you to come into the Evans Library meeting room downstairs under the stairs and look us in the eye and say, "You are not welcome here." I'm not asking you to say anything that you haven't already shown. I'm simply asking you to stand by what you've been doing and speak your truth. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Andres Reed Smith.
Sure. Andres Reed Smith, 4520 Vicki Court, Evans, Georgia. Good evening, Honorable Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Andres, and as a concerned citizen, to reiterate what has been said by other concerned citizens here, I must ask what the impetus is that drives the effective censure of information from our children and the public libraries and under what, if any, real justified grounds? Protecting the children is often to me an empty platitude that ultimately takes the autonomy, agency of the children in question that are meant to be protected to make their own good moral choices and given to the hands of a parent. Censorship ultimately is one of the first things to go. When our first amendment rights are under attack, it's a slippery slope. Columbia County has acted in manners reminiscent to the very country myself and many other people in Columbia County who have immigrated here came from trying to escape Venezuela, a country where dissidents are blackbagged and disappeared for exercising their opinion. I have seen what fear looks like, to not be able to have your opinion shared and how that comes under the barrel of a gun. Libraries are one of the last free pillars of a true society, a free society, if we will. A third space where children are not held at the door for not having enough money, for not having the means to enter. What has slowly but surely disappeared over the course of decades, these third spaces, in our public pools, our community centers, our churches, our sports fields, slowly but surely in the CSRA, they have mostly gone away, and there's only a handful of them left. You've lived here for any more than a few decades. You've probably seen it. This county is still recuperating from the effects of a hurricane that hit us nearly a year ago, where I can see, walking down the street, houses that are covered in burlap and sack with exposed roofs, caved in, and hardly standing foundations. Yet this seems to be the focus. The one recommendation is to take away these frankly asinine guidelines and place the responsibility, leasing children, on the home where it ultimately should be. Thank you.
We've already dealt with all of the business for this evening. I don't think one more motion needs to be made.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.